May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Before we begin, I'd like to have a motion to close, just with a show of hands, please, to adjourn from closed. Councillor Miller on the question, please vote now. Just raise your hand, please, those in favor. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. May I have an approval of the open agenda, please? Moved by councillor Bigger, seconded by councillor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Councillor Bigger. Thank you. Motion carried six zero. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for your patience this evening. I have a few comments. I had the pleasure of meeting the CEO, the interim CEO, Andrew Beckett, for Envision St. John. He comes to us, to the region, from a position as Vice President of Finance Administration at St. Francis Xavier University in Antikynis, Nova Scotia. And prior to that, Andrew was the St. John Finance Commission and Deputy City Manager. So we welcome him and look forward to working with Andrew over this interim period. And the mayors and rural representatives attended their monthly meeting, and the region is moving forward. There continue to be questions about the impact of the New Brunswick government reform, and we are working through those as best we can. I also attended the building community fundraiser for Larche this past week and was very happy to hear Roxanne Fairweather, who is a very successful businessperson in St. John. And her story was of simple beginnings with a work ethic that she had developed at a very early age and is now co-owner of, as I say, a very successful business in St. John. And the towns of Quispamsis and Rosay met recently as a finance committee, joint finance committee, to review the budget proposals from our library, police, and fire. And we have a very strong group of people who are providing our residents with great value for their investments and their tax dollars. Remember that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and if you have an opportunity to wear pink, certainly that will bring recognition and reminders to others. And in Canada, there are one in eight women who will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. So we certainly recognize this and hope that you will spread the word for women to certainly be checked. And it's also something that, there is a percentage of men who suffer from that as well. So wear pink throughout the month of October. On Wednesday night at Kennebec Heights Valley High School, the Kennebec Heights Regional Police Force and guests have invited parents and those interested in attending a discussion at 6:30 PM in the evening to make your child safe while using current technology. And, you know, there are certainly lots of things going on now that our youth have access to, and the police want to make parents and students aware of some of the dangers that are also involved. So those are the notes for this evening. Councillor Thompson, may I have the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection, please?
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamsis exists on the traditional territory of the Wollastawa, Malasit, and McMack people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasmakwadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And maybe we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight, and may we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Thompson. Looking for a disclosure of interest. Moving on to presentations, there are none. Public hearings, there are none this evening. Minutes of the previous meeting, September 19th, 2023. Councillor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move to receive and file the minutes as prepared.
It's been moved by councillor Bigger, seconded by councillor Miller on the question. There are none, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Unfinished business request for an update on active transportation ad hoc committees' recommended actions from councillor Kerry Luck, staff report from Director of Engineering Works, Mr. Loge.
Your Worship, councillor Luck's request for the update, I've filed it in my memo to council. Essentially, the recommendations have been incorporated into the transportation master plan process with the, with the understanding that the formation of the transportation ad hoc committee was making recommendations to that process. So we, we sort of enveloped it all into that, but when we break it down into specific items, some of the things that we have been following up on with respect to the requests covered in the correspondence that we had made inquiries with respect to specific AT planning, the federal government, Federal Green Infrastructure Fund was oversubscribed. We were asked to reexamine the fall, which we'll be doing in the next few weeks, to see if it's any space for that particular program. We have made contact with DTI with regards to working with them, with the incorporation of AT provisions within their right-of-way or adjacent to their right-of-way. Any of the comments or any of the investigations that we've done to date, they've, they've fallen back on the position that first they need to have some type of a detailed engineering proposal or design, and then after that, it may not be a specific department. Sometimes it's a right-of-way branch, sometimes it's a property branch, so they have to see what we have to ask before they can refer to anybody for feedback. So we, we haven't initiated any of that work at this date because we didn't have identified any fundings for engineering studies to do that particular work. We had hoped to see that as part of the AT Federal Green Infrastructure Program. With respect to regional cooperation, anytime that we work with community services, our community services, they keep us abreast of what's happening with respect to the trail division or the trail network, and it's our understanding that there's been no real urgency to, from, from our, our neighboring communities' part to try to, to join up where we are. So at this stage, we're going to be concentrating on bringing our resources, our trails and our network to our boundaries, and then hopefully at that time or just prior to that, we'll have the ability to, to discuss with any adjacent neighbors their particular plans. And finally, with respect to the ongoing review, as part of the transportation master plan, there is a regular review of the steps, the activities, initiatives that the transportation master plan undertakes, and we would anticipate that this would incorporate the AT reviews as identified in the request from our ad hoc committee. So if there's something specific that, that councillor Luck or the AT committee wanted to see, then we can look to address that, but I think this approach should cover the, the initial requests, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Loge, for the update. I actually put this on because I guess hearing last council meeting from Mr. Gillis, it kind of prompted me to kind of think that we really haven't heard a whole lot about active transportation since the committee submitted their recommendations. And I, I think the last point on the motion around creating an ongoing review is really just exactly what we're doing tonight, is keeping council abreast of, you know, what's been happening, what's not happening. And I guess one question I do have is, I feel like we've been talking master transportation plan and active transportation in my very short tender, but I'm wondering, kind of what action items are we potentially going to get into maybe over the next six to 12 months? And what timeline are we thinking in terms of making active transportation and the new master transportation plan a reality in our community? Like, what's the realistic timelines? Because I feel like we're still in the planning stage. I want to get to the, here's what it's going to look like over this many years, and here's some action items that we can at least strive for. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Luck. Could I have a motion on that file, please? Sorry, Mr. Loge.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, there are specific planning things that we would be undertaking with respect to things like street capital program. What we've done is we've taken the street profiles that we've been recommended from our transportation master plan, where we incorporate different levels of AT. So any of our street networks that have that classification will be incorporating AT into that. The thing to recognize is some of the local streets, some of the local subdivision streets, really all that will involve is ensuring that we've got an appropriate shoulder for AT work. For our collector roads, we're looking at, at this, at things like, you know, the continuation of the work that's been done on the Beans Cove Road. With respect to the Millennium Drive corridor, we've got a design that incorporates a separated walking trail network that starts at the Gondola Point arterial that would be carried forward all the way through to the Rosay boundary. So from a, from a specifics, that's the first thing that we would be doing, is the planning is being, is done that particular way. So we see that in our street capital program that will be coming to council in the next month or so. After that, we'll be looking to council for direction with respect to things like scenic roads. I know that we made a presentation to council for the scenic road network on the Gondola Boulevard, or Gondola Point Road. It's sort of a lukewarm reception at that time, but it fell into the AT network scope. And if council feels that, you know, they want to adjust the different streetscapes that we're going to adopt, then we need to know that, and there's going to be those types of presentations that we've made to council in advance of budget before we proceed in spending the money. The Hampton Road is a designated highway program, so we'll be coming to council with a significant project that will likely involve water infrastructure, AT infrastructure, traffic alignment from the hill up off of Pinewood down to the intersection with the Rosay boundary. And that's going to be a designated highway program. That particular street network, for example, from a timeline perspective, is not due to be included or consideration from DTI until 2025. So we're looking at a couple of years that we can, we can work towards that. The other corridor that's up for renewal in 2024 is the Palmer Brook Highway roadway. That's the one that, that comes off by the gravel pits at the end of the highway off-ramp, an on-ramp, and down to the Hampton Road intersection where the flashing lights are. That's going to be repaved, and, and part of that profile will include a continuation of the shoulder, the paved shoulders and things of that nature. With respect to future planning, our transportation master plan has identified paved rotor, paved shoulder policies, so that when we do look at rural streets that may not have an AT component, what we're looking to make sure is that there's sufficient paved shoulder and gravel shoulder to accommodate various activities with respect to whether it's walking, biking, hiking, things of that nature. It's just really when we get down into some of the more costly exercises, such as was identified by the presenter last council meeting, as easy as he made it seem, to be recognized that's taking one snapshot on a, on a kilometer-long stretch of roadway is not that simple. There's going to be various levels of, of challenges for that. So those types of decisions will be made prior to budget when they're due to be replaced, and then they'll be done in concert with council input to make sure that council is still on board with the street networks that were being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Councillor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the update. That's, those will all be such exciting things to see come to pass, you know, eventually. I was just thinking about the presentation from Dillon Consulting at a previous meeting with regards to our application for funding from the Housing Accelerator Fund from the federal government. And when you mentioned, one thing specifically you mentioned there about how a project will come along, you know, in the right timing related to Hampton Road and water infrastructure upgrade, and there'll be this sort of, let's try to do it all at once, you know, rebuild the road and expand water access and stuff. And I just wonder what the overlap is schedule-wise between the master transportation plan and what's being sought through that effort by the town, you know, with Dillon working on our behalf there, Dillon Consulting. I just wonder, is, can you comment at all on the overlap or the implication of that on that project, which, because the master transportation plan kind of, you know, predates the efforts we're making now with the Housing Accelerator Fund, and I just wonder if it speaks at all to that project from your perspective? Thank you.
Yes, Your Worship. As I mentioned, the 2025 timeline is with our infrastructure work on the Hampton Road is, is with the assumption that Housing Accelerator Fund would introduce some level of infrastructure funding for water, for example. It makes no engineering, economic, or common sense to do up a road and then dig it up to put water lines or sewer lines in. So obviously, any infrastructure we're going to do is going to be underground first, and we're going to look at that, that surface afterwards. And definitely, as you pointed out, councillor Bigger, the overlap is going to be, if there's specific funding that requires us to wait a year to do the surface infrastructure, then we'll wait appropriately. I think the prime example that we've seen in the last little while is on the Gondola Point Road, for example. We've got three lift stations there that are going to be excavating a portion of the Gondola Point Road as part of the upgrades for force mains, things of that nature. And that's why we've put off paving the surface of the Gondola Point Road until those are done. We have the ability now for the section that goes from the end of the Quispamsis Road Hill down towards the ferry landing, we essentially are substantially complete, are complete our sanitary sewer work. We've got a little bit of, of stormwater management to look at in that particular area. That will be one of the areas that we look at when it comes to next upgrading of the Gondola Point Road, once we can decide on the streetscape that council wishes to pursue. The other areas on that side hill from, on the Quispamsis in front of the church, where we've, we've excavated that, now we've got to look at some storm sewer work, and then that'll involve continuation of the curb gutter sidewalk, if that's the streetscape that council wishes to pursue on that stretch of the road down to the Gondola Point Road, and if we want to expand those budgets. So definitely, it's, it all falls, you know, one after the other. I've been a proponent, proponent in my career of not digging something up twice, and I'm going to maintain that for whatever time I have left here.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Thank you, councillor Bigger. Councillor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a follow-up question to, for Mr. Loge. In your report, you had mentioned that the master transportation plan, the next step, it sounds like will be public sessions. I guess I'm trying to get my head around what kind of the outcome will be. I'm kind of hoping that, like, I realize, similar to Beans Cove Road, doing something with active transportation potentially could be four or five years in the making, where we, you know, have a plan and we say we're paving this, and we're doing this to this section, and then, you know, year two, we're going to do this, and year three, we're going to do this, and year four, and we're eventually going to have that whole road completely accessible. Are we, as council, going to have kind of a plan similar to that, where we can, you know, after the public sessions, we're going to be able to say, here's our five-year, 10-year kind of wish list of, you know, dated items where we're saying we're going to put active transportation on Vincent Road, and it's going to take three years to do it, and these are the dates we're thinking just for budgeting and just kind of visionary thinking, that's what's going to happen?
Through, Your Worship, yes. The, the, the AT network program that we would be supplying, applying to for the green infrastructure, the Federal, Federal Green Infrastructure Fund would introduce specifically that. Here are the streetscapes that have been adopted by the town. Here are the networks that the town wishes to pursue. Here's the estimated costs for that. Here's the timeline that it would take to achieve that. Then council has a decision to make. Do we say piecemeal it, as you said, you know, every, do it over a four-year program? Or do we say, all right, let's bite the bullet, spend four or five million dollars, do one street system now, get it all done, we're in and out, and we're gone in a year? So those are the types of decisions that council will have to make with respect to the budget implications that you have, the implications with respect to the tax rates, borrowing. And if we want to get into that type of a program, you see many communities, that's what they do. They'll just jump into it whole hog, two feet and both arms, and put everything down on the ground, and that, yes, it's going to be a $5 million project, but we're in and we're out. And the, the, the benefit to that is, is that you can plan for it accordingly, you can plan for it in accordance with your asset management plan, and then you've done that, that particular asset finally, and you're, and you're done with it. Potential benefit doing it that way is you may be able to leverage additional infrastructure funding outside of, of your normal budgeting, operating, gas tax type of funding. So, so that is definitely, yes, that's the process. That's what we envisioned when we were looking to make application under the Federal Green Infrastructure Fund for our AT planning. What it does is it highlights those streets that have that streetscape. We've got, you know, 75% of the streets in the town that would have no infrastructure associated with AT, other than the fact that it's, it's a local street and the traffic doesn't, so we can do those streets paving every year regardless. It's those network streets that we want to be able to focus on, provide council with a plan of attack, a plan of, of estimates. I'd like to say a predictable budget, but the last couple of years hasn't given us a predictable budget to work with when it comes to tenders. And, and then council can decide how they wish to approach it over the next three, five, seven, 10, whatever years.
And a follow-up question, did you say, councillor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up regarding the federal funding you alluded to in regards to, I think you said it was oversaturated this year and we weren't able to apply. So do we plan on applying to potentially the active transportation or whatever it's called, gas tax, or I don't know what the name of it is, but the federal funding to potentially explore a corridor along 119? Will that happen this year or next year?
This year, the, the, it's the Federal Green Initiative Fund, and it's specifically directed at communities for the development of active transportation plans, networks, things of that nature. Our application is to create the plan first, and then if out of that plan, it, it determines that the corridor adjacent to Route 119 is your highest priority, and council agrees with that, that will then generate a decision to, say, prepare those engineering plans that DTI wants to see. So I would envision that if we can get a, a funding, it would be the year after the plan is completed that we'd be making whatever studies, whatever to do. So it's, it's probably a one-year gap after the, the particular plan is created, that we would see an actual application to DTI for use of the right-of-way, or to come back to council with a designated plan of, this is a $5 million street, if you want to do it all at once, it's a $1 million a year, if you wanted to do it over three years, and those types of things. But I would imagine there's going to be at least a one-year gap between when this plan is completed and the priorities that council wishes to set after the result of that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Thank you, councillor Luck. There is a recommendation for staff update to be received and filed. Councillor Donovan.
I would move that the update be received and filed.
Moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Luck on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number B. Consumer fireworks review ad hoc committee update from the town clerk, Ms. Snow.
Yes, Your Worship, the Consumer Fireworks Review Ad Hoc Committee met last week, and this is an update for council and also a request that council extend the October 17th deadline for submission of a final recommendation from the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd make the motion that council support the request of the fireworks review ad hoc committee to extend the deadline date for submission of a recommendation concerning consumer fireworks until it receives the updated information from GNB in the town of Rosay, as indicated in the town clerk staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Luck, seconded by councillor Olson on the question. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you. Just a question or even a comment just to consider. I know we are two separate communities, but obviously the fireworks issue is affecting both of our communities as, as we share fire and police. So I'm just curious if it would be smart to possibly have some communication with the town of Rosay before they do a, a final vote on the matter, because I'm, I'm sure maybe if they see that we're trying to come to a happy medium, maybe they might be inspired to sort of align more with our ideas as well, before they actually sort of pull the trigger and just ban it completely. I don't know if that makes sense or if that's a, an option. I, I don't see why it wouldn't be. I don't think we're influencing anything they do. I just would like to see a little bit more communication, if that's possible, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Donovan. There has been communication, and I believe their discussion will come back to their table probably in November, December period. So we'll certainly update you on, on any correspondence at that time. So it's been moved by councillor Luck, seconded by councillor Olson on the question. No further questions, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number nine, correspondence. Nine A, rezoning application, 442 Gondola Point Road, East Gate House of Prayer. Stuart McAvoy, director, in attendance. Would you please come to the podium? Please give your name for the clerk.
Stuart McAvoy.
And you have a presentation that you would like to discuss or that you would like to bring forward?
I had been expecting that the, the development officer was going to share something, but I can, if there's any questions, I'm prepared to, to respond to them. I did have a, a note, I did see that in the staff report that it noted there was currently separate sewage for the, the two buildings located there. But I believe that's a, a mistake. They currently have a shared sewer, and, but the plan is to separate them, so they each have their own sewage.
Okay. And certainly, planning advisory would give you detail to that, as well as, as the town of Quispamsis staff. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you. I would move the council direct the town clerk to set a public presentation date for October 17th, 2023, to be advertised pursuant to requirements of the Community Planning Act.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Thank you very much. Item B, correspondence from Blenheim Drive residents, Jaswinder Skokar, spokesperson, Vinraya Wadukap, and Josh Brinson, rainstorm drainage issues. Welcome.
My name is Jaswinder Shoker, and I'm a resident of Blenheim Drive, very new to New Brunswick and Quispamsis. I just moved from Ontario about three, four months back. You know, the new suburb. You know, the new subdivision and, uh, the kind of issues we are facing down there, like it was unimaginable for me and my neighbors and that. We are trying to, uh, get that resolved through the builder, but, uh, not much is being done to, uh, i- uh, re- address the issue. So we have a one, uh, like a slide show that we can show how much uh, damage is being caused to our properties. This is a real cry for help and, uh, clearly I was, uh, in the, um, the town council about two months back and I talked to a couple of day in the engineering section and, uh, and also the planning section. And, uh, we don't know, like all of our neighbors, that we are four, four neighbors. And, uh, that, uh, what, what happened, uh, where it did go wrong, it was at the planning department or it at the execution. Uh, our properties are being flooded every time when there, there's a rain. There's a lot of damage done to our premises or to our properties or to our lands. And there's not, uh, seem to be enough drainage. And there seemed to be no plan there and we are, uh, we don't know what to do about that and we are asking for help. So this is a, like, uh, erosion, uh, from the, uh, the hill side and their property damage and also health concerns because of the water all the time standing there like after, after three or four days after the rain. You can see that how much water is running from, uh, at the, behind the property, on the side of the property as well. The next tree, yeah. You'll see that this is the kind of, uh, uh, they say it is done, uh, landscape. I don't know what kind of da- landscaping is that. Because, uh, you can see, uh, there are, uh, naked ru- uh, three r- roots and that, that those tree can fall anytime. Go to the next one, also the same thing. See that? And, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, those, uh, stones there, big stone. They, when, uh, there's a lo- a lot of rain, that they come down. And this is the hazard for, and see, down here, you'll see, I don't know how they expect it created it. But see like, all that roots are just they're naked and, uh, that one tree has already, uh, dead, is already dead. Similarly, same, same situation over here. And, uh, this is, this is, uh, like when they have done the grading, this is how it's happening, like all, all the time is coming down. And this is also same thing, like, because when, when the properties are at the hill, at the bottom of the hill, there should be some, uh, channel for, for the water to go. But, uh, there's very, it's not enough. See, you can see that all the, the lawn is being eroded. And similarly, same the other, other property. And we have five of them. You can see that. And see this, oh, this is all the grading done and that after the rain, everything is washed away. And, uh, our, uh, let's see, all, and you know, not even like we don't have any barrier that can stop, uh, the erosion from the, the hill. That should have an part of that, uh, the plan. And when, uh, this, uh, this channel accumulate the water, then it washes away the, the, even, uh, our driveway. And this hasn't left for, for a long time now. And, uh, I don't know what kind of look does this present for everyone who's ever come in there. Similarly, this property has been sitting there for like six months, like the, no landscape going done. All the dirt, all, all, uh, those stones, stones are coming to the next property and then to the next and to the next. So this is, this is the running water at, at one of, one of the houses. See how much water is there? So we would ask to conduct a comprehensive drain assessment. And then whatever is required should be implemented, urgent repairs. And, uh, then we are asking that when some plans are there, like in the neighborhood, the neighbor, neighbor, the neighbor should be, the neighborhood should be getting, uh, some say in the party, in getting participated in there. And, uh, also regular maintenance should be done. Uh, that's all about, uh, that today, but I would just like to ask you that, uh, we have uh, tried our best to, um, get this one, uh, addressed through the, the builder, but, uh, we're not getting much response from them. And, and every time there's a rain, all of us are under stress, like, so what kind of damage is going to be?
Thank you very much for your presentation. And this area is still the responsibility of your developer. And he happens to be here this evening, so I will ask if he would like to make a comment as to what remediation he may take because these, as I say, this is still under his care. So, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you. I'm Peter Donovan. So I've had an opportunity to review, um, these files. Um, just a, a couple of notes. Um, certainly, some of the images, uh, between four and eight Blenheim Drive, um, that flooding, that, that's certainly something, um, shouldn't, shouldn't happen. Um, it's not, certainly not something that we strive for. Um, so we've, in the subdivision development process, um, you guys are quite familiar, but we go to planning advisory committee, um, engineering design, plans are released for construction and whatnot. Um, so for this specific subdivision, um, it had previously been through PAC to, um, do it as a cul-de-sac. Uh, that was prior to myself or my businesses acquiring the property. Um, when we went to planning advisory for the first time, we were asked to explore other options as to how, uh, we could build this street, um, to make a connection to Squire Drive. One of the concerns at the time was that there was, uh, Kingsway Drive was very long and there was no additional exit. So we did explore that option. One of the things that, uh, was determined at that time is that the grades uh, for what would be Blenheim Drive connected to Squire Drive would be steeper than the typical allowable grades for new subdivision development. So we had to apply for variances for that. Um, and they were accepted and we proceeded with the design. One of the challenges, um, with a design like this is that we're dealing with really steep grades, water moving really quickly. Um, as a result, some of what you're seeing, um, ditches being filled in by exposed earth. Um, I'll go back to one of the images that was shown was, uh, space between four and eight Blenheim Drive that, where the water was collecting near the garage. Um, one of the things that it looks like there is that the swale that goes between each property, so, um, just backing up a little bit, as part of our engineering design, um, there are private drainage swales, um, between each property, so, um, your neighbor's water's not supposed to run onto you. It's supposed to run into a swale between your properties. Um, and it's supposed to run out to the right-of-way, um, into what's a closed system, um, in this situation. So, and that, basically, a lot of, a lot of these swales are, are filled in. Um, our approach with these lawns is topsoil and hydroseeding. These, it takes three years for topsoil and hydroseed to, to become a mature lawn, um, with thick grass roots. These were done in the, in the past three to four months. Um, these are rough timelines. I don't know exactly. Um, so these aren't fully developed yet. Um, my suggestion as a developer, um, will be to review each one of these and in essence, what I'd be looking at doing is, is deepening the, the, uh, swales between each property uh, and then monitoring them during storm events. Um, sort of as a note on some of the other things, the, the bank in behind these properties. So the street is at one elevation, the houses are at another elevation, including the backyard. Um, and then in behind those properties are fairly deep yards, but cobblestone drive is behind them, um, which is an excess of, say, seven or eight meters. That's me guess, guessing. Um, but it's, it's quite high up. So there's quite a bank. There are a lot of trees. Um, we opted to save these trees versus cutting them all down, making lawns. That would have cre- actually created a much bigger erosion problem. Um, so we submitted these in our, in our site plans for the, for each house, which these houses all had permits. They all went through several expect, inspections, um, which they all passed. So, I guess my, my note to council and to the, to the folks here tonight is that we can continue to monitor and review, uh, do everything we can to certainly prevent any flooding. Um, water intrusion in houses is, it's certainly not, that's not something we, we want at all. And we don't want any localized flooding, um, around them. Uh, just on another note to gentleman that lives at twelve Blenheim alone, um, you've been in fair bit of contact with our general manager. Um, he typically deals with all contractual matters. He couldn't be here tonight for presentation, uh, due to a family matter. Um, but he'll, they'll continue to work back and forth. There has been communication. Um, I, I think that's exaggerated a little bit. We're, this is ongoing. We're, uh, we're continuing to to follow what's in our development agreement. Um, just a note also, we had, uh, we applied for construction completion for the development agreement through the engineering department. And a deficiency review was completed on July eighteenth twenty, uh, yeah, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and none of these issues had come up at that time. So that's, we're only a couple of months out from that. Um, and, and at that time, engineering inspection staff was, was onsite, um, going over these things specifically as part of the process. Uh, I hope that helps everyone tonight. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Yes, uh, I'm sure. I, I see some lights flashing and, and I see that you did apply for a variance because of the steepness of the grade and that you had to, uh, deal with some challenges. And that it takes three years for topsoil and hydroseeding to take effect. But I think the gentlemen that are representing their, their families this evening are saying that they're suffering now. And they want to know what remediation you're going to take now. And I know there's communication, but communication needs action. And I think that's why these gentlemen have written to us and why they've come before us this evening. So to wait for them to wait for three years or after the subdivision has been signed off and it falls on the shoulders of the, of the community, of the, uh, counselors here, um, I, I could tell by the expressions on their faces that they, they weren't happy with the idea of waiting for three years for that, uh, grass to take hold, uh, whether it means deepening the ditches, whether it means realigning the direction of the water. Um, I'm going to turn it open to council for questions directed to you, but that's my concern. When we have development within our community, and I am all for development, but I like to see it complement the community. And I like to see that when people move into their new homes, that is something that they're proud of and something that, uh, is not going to be endangered every time we have a, a rainfall or a hurricane come our way. So I'm going to go next to Councilor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. And, uh, actually, I want to reiterate everything that Mayor O'Hara just, just said. I, uh, agree with her completely. Um, I guess first I want to thank Mr. Donovan for being here to, to speak with us. And I want to thank the residents for bringing this to our attention and welcome to Quizpemses. Um, but, uh, you know, I too have concerns because, you know, your house is one of your biggest investments. And, and I can't even, I mean, I feel it because we just built and unfortunately with climate change and water runoff, every time we have one of these crazy rains, you know, I hold my breath, so I can only imagine. Um, you know, I mean, we've, you know, spent time directing the water, but it's still scary. So, I mean, they're actually seeing the effects. And I guess I'm just wondering, um, you know, what solutions do we have or, you know, that you can provide to, to, I guess, address this sooner than later, because I don't think it's fair for the residents to wait until, you know, things, you know, get established and, um, and I don't know if, you know, putting in, and I, I call them French drains. I don't know if that's what their, the true term is, but I know that they're very common in our subdivision because just water is such a big issue now. Where at least, you know, it's, it's, you know, a, a spot where people can actually kind of collect the water and it's not taking out their landscaping or, you know, her, uh, kind of creating the, um, you know, um, the, the fear of, you know, flooding a basement or what have you. So I guess I'm just, I am hoping that there's some solutions because it does sound like they're not getting a resolution. Because I would like to think that if they were, they wouldn't be here tonight. Um, so anyway, I just echo what Mayor O'Hara has said, that, uh, it is concerning. And, you know, these are beautiful new homes in our community and I would definitely want to make sure that, um, you know, it's done properly with some of the direction of our internal staff to make sure, um, we can address it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I would move that the correspondence from the Blenheim Drive residents be referred to staff to work, uh, with the developer JP Custom Homes to ensure that any outstanding drainage deficiencies in the section of King's View subdivision phase nineteen are addressed pursuant to the development agreement.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Donovan, seconded by Councilor Olson. Councilor Olson, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. Uh, thank you very much, uh, to the residents for your presentation. Pitcher's worth a thousand words, so you can really see, uh. And Mr. Donovan, thank you very much for coming and appearing before council. Um, I think three years, uh, is not acceptable. I appreciate that it takes time to, uh, to go to, uh, from, uh, sod to, uh, hydroseed. And that's why on my property I went to sod, because I couldn't wait. Um, I think that, uh, all the water that is impacting those, uh, those houses appear to be running, uh, from, uh, the area above them. So is there any opportunity to redirect the water flowing down into that area uh, by putting in a, a cross ditch or something like that, redirecting the water before it even enters that particular area? And, uh, and also, uh, we have used, uh, in the town, I'm sure you have too, uh, the installation of rock in the banks of the ditch to redefine the ditch and, and improve the integrity of the ditch, so it doesn't wash away every time it gets water. May, maybe be able to control it more with some rock, define the ditch better. But, uh, we are, uh, we're seeing this more and more in our developments just because of the complexity of the storms that we're having nowadays. The hundred-year storms are, are happening every other month now, it seems. So, and that's the new reality that we're dealing with, with climate change and everything. So I think that, uh, something like that has got to be addressed and I think that, uh, it, it is something that, uh, the town, uh, would like to rectify prior to it being handed over to the town. So I think, uh, a council would be, uh, resistant to, uh, accepting, uh, the status, uh, as complete as, as presented this evening. So, uh, I just appreciate that, uh, that the, um, residents need some assistance and those are just, uh, your suggestions there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. On the question, Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship, and thank you for, for coming in and, and showing. And thank you, Mr. Donovan, for, for also coming in. Um, I want to echo what Councilor Olson has just stated, this, almost every meeting or every second meeting, we're talking about flooding now. Uh, I grew up here, so flooding wasn't an issue years ago, but now it seems to be more prevalent all the time, the amount of rain. Even you see what just happened in New, New York this last week. Um, I think we're also at a crossroads where possibly we got to look at our internal sign-offs and, and what PAC is doing. What was okay five years ago or three years ago, doesn't seem to be working. I mean, we had discussions last meeting regarding what's going down Old Coach Road. We've had issues or discussions of what's happening on the other side of Pennville. So knowing that the town has signed off and no deficiencies and knowing that they've met all the PAC, we also got to look at us as a town and what we're signing off on for slopes, what we're signing off on for swales. Um, it does it, and to what Councilor Olson said, where I live, they did some new, new, uh, Mr. Queen did some new renovations up the street. I don't know if it was him or if it was the neighbors, but in all their swales, they just put sod because everything was washing out and they had no choice. So, um, I, I, I think the town, we should also look at what we do in the future because we got slopes that are being approved that seem to be causing child because we got slopes that are being approved that seem to be causing challenges. We're trying to leave trees, but depending where the trees are in the slopes, like if it was a small slope, it might might have worked. Um. We also signed off for all deficiencies on July twenty twenty-three. Um, so it's what I I guess we need to look at different guidelines too as our town with because right now everybody's following different guidelines, which worked again five years ago. And this is just a yogurt salesman saying this, right? So it's but we we're seeing this every second week, we're talking about flooding. So um, I don't know what the 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 answer is, but we we have to help the developers. We have to help the the residents and 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 help the town. So we're we're not talking about this too often. But uh like Mr. Olson said, the one in a hundred year storm seem to be every month now. And uh whether it's coming down Queensberry where I live or whether it's on the other side of Ritchie Lake. So um hopefully we'll figure out some type of resolution that can make. And I and I'm looking at Mr. Loj, he's looking at me, so I don't know if he has a a comment back, so thanks.
Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, worship. And uh, yeah, again, I'd say thanks very much for bringing those great images in to be able to kind of get a real sense of what's happening. And appreciate Mr. Donovan uh being here as well. And I I take note of what you'd mentioned about hydro seeding. I can see the elements of that in many of the pictures there that that's been done, you know? And I appreciate your uh comment about too about ecological concerns about not taking trees down where you don't have to. And, you know, I mean, to be fair, yeah, and a variance, a variance was applied for related to slope issues, I think. Is that my understanding related to this? Yeah, so that's, you know, I mean, I I don't, I don't take your comments to mean that you're expecting people to put up with uh this situation for three years and too bad for you because I got approved and that's that. In fact, the first thing you said, I think, was that flooding that I see between this house and that house, no, that shouldn't be happening. And I appreciate your commitment to kind of look at deepening swales and there'd be some other suggestions here. And no doubt your expertise informs you about what would be appropriate there. So I just wanted to say that, you know, um, this motion just sort of speaks, I think, to uh saying let's let's as counselor Olson points out, we don't really want this to have to wait until it's signed off back to the town's responsibility. We want to get in and intervene now, be partly because it's in our best interest as the town, but partly because it's just in the best interest of the residents and in your company. And so I think that everybody's eager to try to make this right. And whatever that requires, you know, I I I get the impression that you certainly want to try to make that right. Uh, I have no expertise along this line, but I just take note of your uh attitude to say, well, let's let's try to get this fixed. And the variance to me, it uh says that PAC uh to counselor Miller's point, uh perhaps what we have looked at in terms of granting variances uh out of an eagerness uh to uh, you know, see continued development occur. Maybe there are with climate change occurrences and, I mean, as was mentioned, we we've been dealing with terrible washout of great road work that was done on Old Coach Road just last year. And so whereas a town, we're dealing with that and our staff are dealing with that. So uh we're uh we're a little bit befuddled with some of this stuff about how exactly to address it, it seems. But uh anyway, I appreciate your willingness to be here and to speak to it. And uh I just wanted to underline that I I took from what you had to say that you certainly do want to try to uh make right for this. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Bigger. Mr. Loj, please.
Your worship, uh and I think I may want to clarify a few things here through you. Uh, when it comes to properties and property drainage and and the application for variance, the variances are granted. And usually PAC will grant a variance as long as the developer or builder can show mitigating circumstances, so how they're going to address it. So it's just not carte blanche, people granting variances just for the sake of granting variances, because you have to be on a hill or whatever the case may be. In this particular situation, there are three definite steps that we're dealing with. We're dealing with the the development and the construction of the property and the storm system and the infrastructure in the street right of way. We're dealing with the properties, drainage around the properties that that may be directed through easements out to town infrastructure, eventually town-owned infrastructure. We're dealing with building permit applications for individual lots that have a site drainage plan that show how the water on the site for that particular building lot is going to be directed away from the home the homeowner's own property as well as the neighboring properties. So this is a three-pronged approach. And, you know, in some situations, the developer is the builder who can control all these things. Sometimes the the homeowner themselves will be the builder self, you know, they'll self-contract it or they'll they'll say, listen, I I'll pay for the house, but I'm going to do my own landscaping. So there's going to be some onus of responsibility spread equally between the builder, the developer and the property owner themselves. To say that the town has accepted anything, we've accepted infrastructure in the street network that that we will eventually ex be be ours in our in our right of way. The town does not accept site drainage plan work that the builder and the homeowner should be working together to put on the site. If it impacts our infrastructure, if a ditch that is constructed on a private property drains into town infrastructure, is not done properly, it's flooding or clogging, we can go back to the homeowner or that builder and say, please, address this for us. So there's levels of control that we have here. So I think the important focus is, and and I and I and I agree that it's nice to see the property owners as well as the developer um on on this essentially on the same page. But there is ultimately the bulk of the responsibility rests with those two parties before they come to the town to say the town has to do this. Town has already done their review with respect to infrastructure. PAC has done a review with respect to granting variances and the conditions that would be that would be granted for those variances. So we've already set the stage for how a a a subdivision should be built. The town has had a great history of being development friendly and trying to give the developers an opportunity to say, oh, we're not going to make you put in curb and gutter and sidewalk. We're not going to make you put in sod on everything. We give you the opportunity to uh work with your sites that that are there to give you the best opportunity to provide a product that everybody can live with. And that's where that negotiation between the builder and and the property purchaser comes into play. So so we want to avoid going down a slippery slope of dictating exactly what has to happen on every sit your situation so that all of a sudden we take away the flexibility and the ability from a a property owner to have a good purchase and a builder to make a profit off that purchase. We're talking about being that development friendly. But we also rec- recognize that when it comes to drainage issues, there's an understanding, as has been mentioned here, conditions are going to change. The the climate change is in front of us and we see that happening all the time. So you have to make stuff that's resilient. And I think in this particular situation, I think the 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 situation that we find ourselves in may have been acceptable a couple of years ago, may have been acceptable at that time, but now you've got to adjust it for the particular conditions. And that's where the discussions have to happen between the builder and the property owners themselves. I I I think the the last thing that I want to bring to council's attention really is the fact that developers agreements and our zoning bylaws have specific clauses. You know, it's one thing to say, yes, it's it's it takes three years for it to be established. But in even our own bylaws, we say a property owner has up to twenty-four months to complete landscaping on their property. So there is some onus upon that lands, the property owner to make sure that their properties done done appropriately. The same as a back, the if if a back slope of a property is not part of a drainage easement or whatever, then the property owner has to be able to say, I'm happy with that, I can deal with it. Or talk to the builder and say, can you fix that for me? It's going to cost me whatever. So those are the types of discussions that have to occur outside of the town halls. Those are the responsibility of the two purchasers, the two sides of the agreement. So uh, you know, appreciate council's sympathy and empathy with respect to the situation that we find ourselves in. We set the groundwork and the stage for those developments to happen, but we also set the guidelines so that the discussions can happen between the two parties.
Thank you, Mr. Loj. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. No, excellent points, Mr. Loj. And let me just say, far be it from me to infer or leave accidentally leave the impression that I am ascribing any sort of negligence to our uh PAC or our planning team or engineering uh or what have you. I think all due diligence, I'm sure, is being committed, you know, as it should be. And so I appreciate, but I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Bigger. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I just um wanted to, I guess, ask a question to Mr. Loj about his comments because he had mentioned one of the three scenarios is a drain drainage plan. And I guess to counselor Miller's uh comments is I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, I guess, to give direction, because in this particular case, it sounds like the drainage plan is not working very well. So I'm just wondering if there is an opportunity to have the expertise in-house give guidance in future, knowing that these hundred-year storms are happening very regularly and, you know, water issues are becoming more and more common. Um, you know, to your point, drainage plans that were quite acceptable maybe five years ago don't seem to be, you know, fitting the bill or, you know, accomplishing what they were hoping to accomplish nowadays, just with what's going on with the, you know, with the environment and climate. And I'm just wondering if there is something that we can do internally to still give the flexibility to builders and residents, but to also protect them, you know, and give them some guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Luck. On the question, it's been moved by counselor Donovan, seconded by counselor Olson. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I know that uh we've uh several of us alluded to the fact that uh waters, water drainage is a serious problem when there's new developments and that. I guess my question would be, who ultimately approves the water drainage? The developer, property owners, or the town? Because my understanding is that once the town approves uh the recognition of a wa- the water plan is that uh hopefully it should work then. So I just wonder where these uh where these deficiencies, how they're rising and that.
Thank you, counselor Olson, Mr. Loj.
Thank you, your worship, counselor Olson. Um, the overall drainage plans for the subdivisions submitted to the town for review. Um, so what the developer will provide the town with is some type of a storm management plan that shows either it's a net zero or it's shows plans where it's going to be retained or whether it's the infrastructure is going to be directed, the flow is going to be directed. And they size all the storm sewer infrastructure accordingly. So if if through that, the uh developer says, we're going to do onsite drainage through private drainage ditches or easements or whatever that might be, um then, as I said earlier, we leave some of the discretion to the developer to say, okay, we feel that we can divide this flow equally amongst these four or five properties and some of the flow will go back through the backyards and then come out to the front to the catch spaces that are in the system. So the overall project is is looked at and reviewed by the town. Ultimately, it's the individual developers that provide their consultants to say, okay, here's what we think will work with their recommendations. The town looks at it and says, yeah, okay, that will be fine with us. When it comes to individual site building plans, what we look at is to make sure that the placement of a dwelling, the lot will not prohibitively uh impact that particular dwelling. So the drainage has to be able to be directed away from it out to the existing storm sewer that was approved by the town or to an easement that was approved by the town uh with also the fact that it shouldn't be draining onto a neighboring property. So so we allow some flexibility to the individual property owners to say, okay, here's how we're going to get the water from point A to point B to an area that has been approved as a receiving area for the town. So the town doesn't go in and say, okay, you have to put a French drain here, a rock ditch here, a swell here, a sod here. It's the basic premise is your site drainage plan says that you can put a house on this lot. The water will flow away from the house to an approved location and it won't impact your neighbors, generally speaking. That's what we look for with our plan approval, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loj. And certainly, that would be the hope of of the develop- of the developer and of the residents that uh that the plan works. So on the question, the motion has been made by counselor Donovan, seconded by counselor Olson. There are no further questions. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Thank you, gentlemen all for being here this evening and for expressing your concerns on both sides. Item number ten, bylaws. A proposed zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash four five, application to discharge CPA agreement six one five zero four five, New Brunswick Limited, thirty-three Penningill Road, to remove restriction that neighborhood commercial property NC only be used as a physiotherapy clinic. Consideration of third and final reading. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, worship. I'm prepared to uh uh move for third and final reading. Uh, be given to zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash four five in order to remove the existing section thirty-nine Community Planning Act Agreement use restriction, which limits the usage of the property described as thirty-three Penningill Road, PID number three oh two one one three eight seven to only a physiotherapy clinic use pursuant to zoning bylaw number fourteen dash one seven enacted two thousand five uh oh six twenty-one. And further, that such parcel of land be delineated on the town of QuizpamSis zoning map attached to zoning bylaw number zero three eight as a neighborhood commercial zone, which zoning status is hereby confirmed. And further, that the discharge of the said section thirty-nine agreement is hereby authorized.
Thank you. It's been moved by counselor Bigger and seconded by counselor Miller. On the question, counselor Olson did. On the question, seen there, none, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Uh, the the motion about the uh property that we just uh that we just voted on. Um.
Referring to thirty-three Penningill Road?
Yes, exactly, yeah. Um, uh, no, par- no, no, I'm referring to, I'm sorry, back to the uh I'm sorry, on Blenheim with Peter Donovan.
Counselor Bigger, we're we're just finishing a vote on this one first. And then I have to have the approval of council to go back and discuss.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. So it's okay for, uh, yes, six six zero in favor of the motion, yes. So I can do that. So counselor Bigger, I can allow you, I may allow you, and I will allow you unless council votes against that or or has any question on that. So go ahead, counselor Bigger.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate uh your privilege on that. I I just, I I should have jumped on that when the question was hanging there, that that um the motion as scripted does not actually include any reference to following up uh with the residents that have brought the issue forward. And I just thought it seemed like it would be uh reasonable enough that we would, you know, I I think it's great that we have a a plan to work with the developer. But I di- I don't believe the motion uh actually said anything along that line, so. Okay, very good. That's understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor Bigger, for bringing that to our attention. Item ten B, bylaw number R zero two five, a bylaw to repeal bylaw number zero eleven dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw respecting the undertaking of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in QuizpamSis. It's been moved by counselor Donovan. Would you like to read the motion, counselor Donovan?
Uh, first reading be given to bylaw number R zero two five, a bylaw to repeal bylaw number zero eleven twenty twenty-three, a bylaw respecting the undertaking of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in QuizpamSis.
Moved by counselor Donovan, seconded by counselor Olson. On the question, counselor Olson. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Consideration of second reading. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I'd move second reading be given to bylaw number R oh two five, a bylaw to repeal bylaw number zero eleven two oh two three, a bylaw respecting the undertaking of certain works at a local improvement as a local improvement on various streets in QuizpamSis.
It's been moved by counselor Olson, seconded by counselor Donovan. On the question, counselor Miller? Okay, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. New business, item number eleven, award of RFP number twenty twenty-three TQ zero six dash eleven, solid waste con uh collection, staff report from town treasurer. Ms. Brandon. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'll apologize in advance, but I'm hoping that council
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll apologize in advance, but I'm hoping that council can indulge us and refer this particular item to the October 17 meeting. We didn't provide council with sufficient information on this, and we just think that it's a big issue that will probably result in a number of questions, and it might be prudent to err on the side of a two-week delay on that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I would move that council delay this item. I'm not sure if that needed a motion or not.
Until October 17. Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six-zero. Item number 12, reports. Under reports, I would like to bring your attention to our very own Gary Loge, Director of Engineering, for his new recognition and position as Chair of the American Public Works Association, President for North America. So that is a huge achievement, and certainly brings a great deal of wealth and knowledge back to our community, which, having read the material and knowing some of the things that Mr. Loge has brought back from his many meetings, it puts us in the driver's seat and keeps us ahead of the game on many of the decisions that are made throughout the engineering department. So congratulations, Mr. Loge, and we wish you best of luck in this new position. Counselor Olson.
I'd move to receive and file reports, Your Worship.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question. Counselor Donovan.
Oh, my button was just pressed.
Okay. That's correct. Please vote now. Motion carried six-zero. Item number 13, business arising from committee of the whole. There isn't any. I will ask for an adjournment. Counselor Olson, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by? Seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, please vote now. Wishing everybody a happy rest of your week. Good night, everybody. Counselor Miller?